Let us join our hearts and minds together as we gather in the community room to do the wishes for the best, make everything in our community the things we'd like them to be. We ask that you help those who are in need of healing hands. We ask that you protect those who protect us. We ask that as we gather tonight, we learn from each other the positives and the negatives, and then we make the decisions on what are best for everyone. These things we ask in his name, amen. Be truly quiet when you're here. What I would like to do, folks, is backhand heroes for some people, raise your hand. For volume up, if you're ready to hear. All right, I'll give you that. Okay, let's go on with, you have to electronically receive the minutes of the last meeting. You've read them, any additions or corrections? Being non-near will be filed at present. Same thing is true of the February 12th meeting, special council meeting. Any additions or corrections? Being non-near will be filed at present. Any additions?
I have the items listed on the agenda with no additions.
Or should you file at present as the order?
So.
Make it faster, Mr. Mayor. Call the wolf.
Pickett, Edwards, Kiko, King, Monis, Mastriani.
And moving on, Mr. Mayor, for your first.
Thank you, President Johnson, you've welcomed council members and citizens to our home. My first thought ahead was following three orders. My legislature, the Marisol, was during late January of 2025, water, shore, cemetery, building, engineering, and the Marisol was sold one million eight thousand dollars, seven hundred and ninety dollars in seventy-nine cents. Under regional development, we're meeting with Amtrak on Monday to discuss some upgrades in their route service and improve the lounge and food and beverage areas of our training facility that we have. We're anxious to have them come in. There's certainly needs upgrades there, so we're anxious to have them come in and see what we can do, what part of the city they play. The Rhino Storage Facility on the east side of State Street is going to be opening very soon, and they're already discussing adding an extension on the west side of that building. The population temperature control storage is meeting, and they're getting a lot of good positive feedback from the public on that. So, and with that, of course, across the front, the property base in State Street are planning retail businesses. There'll be four other businesses across the front of State Street there. Of course, all landscaping, lighting, upgrading there will add to the east corridor as you come into the line. And so we're excited about that. We are, we do have knowledge that the first building on the retail park is near these Starbucks. And then that was on the west side and on the east side. So we're anxious to get that underway. Now, I would extend a thank you and promote the services of our Commons. The Commons is a community center that houses multiple agencies that work together to serve the community. It's managed by the Greater Alliance Foundation in partnership with the Regulatory Center at University of Mount Union. The Commons.
The Commons works with a network of different agencies, organizations, churches, businesses, and a total of fifty other agencies in Stark County. And of course, on premises, they have eight multiple agencies. Star Fresh Grocery Store, which is open Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, nine thirty to five. The YWCA has a career and fashion boutique center. Challenge Ministries offer job assistance. Sports Out Street Outreach has connected children with affordable sporting equipment. University of Mount Union, of course, internal operations support. Beacon Charity Pharmacy is a professional pharmaceutical service and medications. And of course, Happy Hat for Humanity does affordable housing, in which we're going to have three additional houses being constructed this year as well. The YWCA as well, they're looking at an overnight warm center at the Commons. So there's discussion of that going on, but we need that facility. And so we're excited, and of course, as always, the city will give all support for me. We can do that. So again, anytime you, we support all the businesses in town, and the Commons are doing great service for a lot of people in that community, so let's support them any chance we can.
Mr. President, that is my report.
Any questions? All right, moving on. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and the council. Real quick, I wanted to point out duty ordinance number, there is a sewer rate ordinance, this is number nine twenty-five. Again, it is not pending at the past night. Wanted to make a point about, in case you have questions or want more information at the upcoming meetings. Would that also enable our supervisor board, we've had discussions about the campground in Westville, those have.
Can I?
Is that better?
All right, good.
Thank you, okay. Westville, we talked about the supervisor board of the campgrounds. Getting to the point where they are not viable on common terms. We've managed those for the city for about six or seven years now, with the idea that if we can do it without having to use water pumps, we could. So if we couldn't, we would look at the alternative, which would probably be closing, but we're going to start looking at that. So we want to make sure we're aware. We've got some meetings scheduled right now. They are not capable of paying their own way. The last thing is that the ground two, grants, which is the ordinance before you, which is third reading tonight, we can finally get a date for that, if you remember when this one was started. We didn't know what that date was, kind of held up breathless, we put in suspended rules. Fortunately, this middle date is tomorrow morning, everything is prepared. And over at the county, they're supposed to get us into the very first batch, we'll cross our fingers to see, but we will still get that ordinance passed then. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Questions? Moving on, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, sorry, sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a formal report, just want to remind council, we'll probably need to send you in for next meeting. So before we adjourn, we'll need to make another motion to have that meeting here, and that's all I have.
Mr. Holmes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have three things tonight. The important, around the packet that goes out every month, basically, is a eight-page document that goes over the general fund only. So I tried to summarize it for these meetings. So far, for the first month of the year, January, revenue has trailed a little bit behind what we'd like to see so far. I talked about it at the last meeting, executive income taxes are down as far as January goes. We'll get a new report once February is complete. Hopefully, we'll have a little better. On the expense side, we're a little bit compared to last year, we are within our target budget. The budget, we look at how we compare to that. But I understand that we're not all looking straight on as far as our revenue, revenue houses, occurrences occur in the city, but it's a big thing to look at, so we are looking at that. Overall, the general fund balance declined by a hundred and thirty-eight dollars for the first month of the year. So we'll give you guys a ticket reports on it as the year goes on. The second thing is the public record training announcement for the elected officials. We have to go through that every term, so if you've done it in the past, you still have to do it. We're in the early stages of the state audit, it just began about two weeks ago. They're asking for copies of the certificates of social advancement training. Technically, you haven't told them your term, but if you can get them sooner, it's better. The last thing is the City of Alliance dot com website, if you guys get a chance to look at that. That's been updated through our current provider. It was nothing to charge. It was just due for a refresh and like all that. I think it's a lot easier to look at it. I think it's a lot more organized and concise, so if you guys get a chance to take a look at that, I think you'll see the advancements that we already put through the last six months. And that's all I have.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Moving on. Committee report. Mr. Mayor. Brown, Lee, Land. Utilities.
A note form report, and I just wanted to draw the council's attention to ordinance seven dash twenty-five, and I'd ask for your approval on that. That came from the two committees who approved it, the Water Supervisor Board. Mr. Mayor, I just want, that's all.
Question?
Number one.
All right, moving on, safety committee chair.
No formal report.
Regional development, Mr. Mayor.
No formal report. We did meet last Tuesday, or Wednesday. And the CTPG has been selected, so everybody will soon be receiving their funds.
Highness, Dr. Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. President. We can have a finance committee meeting on the twelfth, in which we finalize our discussion on the ordinance of ninety-six twenty-four. We have a motion to defer back to the entire council. So tonight, we'll be taking a vote on that ordinance. And then we have a quick discussion on the resolution opposing Senate Bill fifty-six. We found out that our neighboring communities also are presenting a resolution in opposition to Senate Bill fifty-six. We'll see if that has any action.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can everybody hear me? Yeah, I. So to recap, so I've lived in Alliance my entire life. I choose to raise my children here. I'm invested in the future of our city and the community who lives here. As Chair of the Planning, Zoning, and Housing Committee, one of my goals is to ensure that everyone who rents in Alliance has access to safe housing. Having a rental regulation and inspection program will help achieve this. It will protect our aging housing stock. It will help increase home values for all who live and invest here. We need stronger code enforcement so we can hold those accountable renting homes that lack basic safety standards. This will create a stronger housing market, one that is healthier as a result. Stronger code enforcement should not be seen as an attack on landlords who own property in Alliance. It's a tool to ensure everyone has access to safe housing that many cities use. Throughout this entire process, I've met and I've listened to those who oppose, those who are in favor of any rental ordinance. And I will assure you, all council members, that I will ensure that this ordinance is fairly drafted. In the past two weeks, I received community feedback on the proposed ordinance, because it was presented or shown two weeks ago. And I need time to make sure that, I received community feedback on the proposed ordinance, and I need time to make sure all those concerns are heard and that I will not be formally introducing ordinance sixty-five twenty-five, sixty twenty-five tonight. I understand, community, that you were looking for some sort of action on this tonight, but meeting an arbitrary deadline is not warrant rushing this process. We need to, we need to do our due diligence. So our work continues. In the meantime, we will continue to focus our efforts on solidifying the language of the ordinance. I will be holding a committee meeting to publicly discuss the fee structure so we can add this important figure into the proposed language, and we will keep this a top priority. I just want to thank everybody that's contributed to this so far. This is a deserving effort, and I truly do appreciate it, so thank you.
Any questions? All right, moving on. We're in that time of public debate, and very busy. To sign up, we have a number of people, try help.
I mean, I can do a solo vote if anybody wants to.
Last one, boys, you lost. Anyway, we have a number of people signed up. We only allow thirty minutes for that, for each person, we allow two and a half minutes. I will raise my hand if two, so you can summarize. And to start off, Regina Johnson, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, from President and members of the City Council, family in Alliance community. My name is Portia Johnson, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today about an important economic driver in our community, the Percy Young Hopkins Family Reunion. Two thousand twenty-five, we marked the eighty-fifth annual reunion during the second weekend of July. Our records and newspaper articles boast attendance of three hundred to five hundred people each year. Family reunions bring together loved ones from here and far, and while their primary purpose is to strengthen bonds, they also generate significant economic benefits to our foundation city. Each year, our family chooses Alliance as our gathering place, bringing valuable tourism dollars that support our local businesses. For the past eighty-five years, except during COVID, our family has come together at Silver Park. We book hotel rooms, diner restaurants, great event spaces, and business attractions. We shop in stores, use local transportation services, and contribute to the overall vibrancy of our economy. A single family reunion can inject thousands, sometimes even hundreds of thousands of dollars into our local economy in just one weekend. By recognizing supporting family reunions as a key part of our tourism strategy, we can encourage more families to choose Alliance Ohio as their destination. This could include promoting our city as a family-friendly location, offering resources to make planning easier, or even providing smaller incentives for large gatherings. Investing in family reunions is investing in our small businesses, our hospitality industry, and ultimately, our community's economic growth. I encourage the council to consider policies and initiatives that make Alliance a premier choice for family gatherings. I stand before you, representing our three hundred to five hundred members, to request three items. First, to deem the second Saturday of July as Percy Young Hopkins Day. Second, to have a permanent occupancy of Miller's Pavilion on that day. And lastly, and most importantly, to have an evaluation of the economic impact of our family reunion in Alliance Ohio. Thank you for your time and for your commitment to making Alliance a thriving, welcoming place for families to be connected.
Thank you. Well, kicking the orders, good afternoon. First, we charge Mendoza, followed by Lloyd Perk.
Sure want to hear me now? Okay, wonderful. Oh, is this thing on? Inspiration, so what's going on here? Is that better? All right, great, thank you. All right, so my name is Hori Mendoza. My address is in seven oh one, I'm Vincent Boulevard, and I'm speaking on behalf of our Alliance Citizens for Safe Housing. In light of Councilman Mastriani's comments earlier, this is going to be a pared-down version of what I was going to say. So kind of riff it for a moment. I believe that this council has the opportunity and power to help a lot of people across many important pieces of life in our community, and I believe that for much of the past year, Councilman Mastriani and his committee has sought common sense policies that have improved so many people's lives in our city by increasing safety and transparency in our rental market. As a citizen, conserving my fellow neighbor's well-being and as a homeowner, I can't in good conscience say I would vote for this version of the ordinance if I were to wear shoes. I would say that, just as everyone else here, yes, it's been some time that this has been under consideration. Last time I spoke up, not two weeks ago, because I was sick, but the previous time, I said good things for our community, our worth the investment in time, and I still believe good things can be done here. So I asked the members of the Planning and Zoning Committee, and the law department, and anyone else in our city government relevant to this matter, to work in good faith with each other to accomplish good things. And thank you, Seema, Detroit.
All right, Perk.
Good evening, members of council. What I have given you is a copy of nineteen thirteen Form ten forty. Please note the tax rates on page one. Taxation of B-creep is the main reason any fee for rental housing registration and our inspections is unacceptable. When the Sixteenth Amendment federal income tax was ratified in nineteen thirteen, the minimum tax rate was one percent on incomes of below nineteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars today. Two percent on incomes between twenty thousand and fifty thousand. Six hundred and forty-three thousand to one point seven million dollars today. And a top rate of seven percent on incomes above five hundred thousand, sixteen point one million dollars today. The standard deductions for married couples was four thousand dollars, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars today. At a time when the average income in the United States was thirteen hundred dollars, now forty-one thousand dollars today. Prior to nineteen thirteen, the only revenue sources for state, federal, and local government was tariff, excise taxes, real estate tax. Income tax had been unconstitutional by the Supreme Court. Within just five years, nineteen eighteen, the top tax rate had been raised to seventy-seven percent. Taxpayers were given slight relief during the twenties to twenty-five percent, but in nineteen thirty-one, tax rates were raised to sixty-three percent, then to nineteen to ninety-four percent in nineteen forty-four on incomes over two hundred thousand dollars, three point seven million dollars today. While it hasn't been proven, George Washington has been credited with the following statement. Government is not reason, it is not elegance, it is force. Like fire, it is a dangerous servant and a fearful master. I wish no disparagement on this body. However, government is a living, breathing thing, and history shows, like every other living organism, its primary purpose is to survive and grow. That proof requires money, government's throughout human history, that sees that money wherever they can find it. That, Mr. Mayor, on this council, is why five dollars is unacceptable. This history shows these five dollars today is a hundred dollars next year, five hundred dollars five years from now, and unlimited into infinity, depending on how much revenue the government might have, to extort from the people to increase its size, scope, and power. To summarize, any fee whatsoever is unacceptable. We will use every legal means to stop this attempt of extortion, including litigation. If revenues required through the proposed program, then place a levy on the ballot. Let the people decide if this is actually important to them, or simply a fight for money grab by two or three council groups. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jessica Zledi, and I live at twenty-five twenty-second Farm Drive. As a co-founder of Alliance Citizens for State Housing, our group will continue to speak out and support the need for better safety measures for the families who rent in our city. We still firmly believe that effective rental registries with interior inspections and measures in place to safeguard against retaliatory behavior will help ensure the living conditions for renters in Alliance. We urge City Council to look at surrounding cities with effective regulations that have been upheld in court, such as North Canton and Morgan. North Canton has been held up at the county level, and Morgan has been held up by the Ohio Supreme Court. Fees associated with these two cities also seem minimal. North Canton's being fifty dollars for a three-year license per unit, which would turn out to be about seventeen dollars per year. Even if landlords had to pass the fee along to tenants, it would be less than two dollars a month. People in our community, regardless of income, deserve to have basic safety standards met in their rental units. As it stands, our current regulations are not effective enough to safeguard families. We urge council to do right by renters and pass effective regulations that will help safeguard families in our community.
Jordan.
Good evening, everyone, George Bass, Twitter, six seventeen Remo Avenue. I am here to now withstand the unity of our tenants against the proposed ordinance. Look around, this is what real community involvement looks like. Landlords, tenants, residents coming together, staying informed, actively shaping fair housing policies that will benefit everyone. If this ordinance is fully meant to benefit our residents, let's give them a voice, let's put it on the ballot. The reality is that Alliance is known for its low cost of living, which also means low wages. Right now, twenty-three percent of our residents live in poverty, sixty-three percent of the housing in town is rental, and sixteen percent of our population are seniors, with most of them on fixed income. This raises a critical question. Where are the good-paying jobs our elected officials promised? Fast food and retail jobs won't lift this community or allow residents to afford a better life. If the goal is to model Alliance after North Canton, then we need a real strategy to attract stable, well-paying employers, not just get more into the service industry positions. As landlords, we would like to see rental rates that reflect a stronger local economy, but we are also realistic what people can afford. Housing is not just about building, it's about people, families, and the future of our city. If this ordinance passes, we'll increase costs to reduce rental availability, import in both tenants, landlords, with excess fees and regulations. This is exactly what we are trying to prevent in Alliance. So who does this truly benefit? Certainly, not those hard-working families who already struggle to find safe, affordable housing. For over a year, we've heard claims supporting this ordinance, yet no clear evidence for a budgetary plan that's been presented to justify it. And this is the true goal of improving our housing stock. All properties must be held to the same standard, because let's be honest, owner-acquired properties can bring down an entire neighborhood just as much as the rentals do. At the end of it, the Alliance leaders need to focus on attracting industries that provide career-level wages, not just more minimum wage jobs. Without that, we remain stuck in the same cycle. We're not the merit of fees, inspections, or regulations. None of those amounts will change the economic reality in Alliance. Thank you.
Good evening, Jenny Skolwos, laundry, East City, Alliance Ohio. Thank you, Mr. President, City Council, members of the city administration, and the public. I did do well with my public speaking class at College, so I thied for trying to get my point across. I knew because I was just talking to my boss. Americans may be vocal, but they are not stupid, says Morgan Freeman. The citizens of this town will eventually figure out what the weak plan is for this city, and they will discover that it does not include the lower and middle class, that encompasses the well-to-do and those that are receiving favors from the city. This governing body needs to keep the less fortunate in mind, creating a more expensive housing situation. I have here in my DM shut-off notices for a quarter of my tenants, along with several other property owners, from last week for their gas bill. This means their heat, hot water, and ability to cook for their families is in jeopardy. These people are not worried about their Tri-Mac town, or Netflix, or their fancy makeup order. Shutter and food are the problems in this town, not bush staws and extra leaves in the yard. Let's get real. If the city is worried about tenants needing numbers for social services supports, send a postcard to every tenant occupied house, just like the postcards the city sent for city taxes. Use the resources that the city has. Use the water company's database to get this information out. It is a detailed system that identifies tenants or unoccupied houses. Second, I think it should be mandatory that if the council person is absent from a meeting, they should have to watch the recording that the high school has made. In summary, if it was the desire of some people sitting in this room, just with the City of Alliance, you have succeeded. More than that, by passing any version of this. More than that, by passing any version of this proposed ordinance, this town will turn into a city of the have and have-nots. Most of the have-nots are already struggling. Make the city employees do their assigned jobs with their current codes and regulations. Clearly, they are not, as we have not received any details of these inspections. This is all we are talking about. Other than that, we're not going to make progress.
Hi, my name is Tracy Whaley. I live at 72 Cheyenne Trail in Auburn, Ohio. I want to thank all the people of our tenants for coming out today, a lot of street residents over here, and we are fighting really hard to keep our rents low. So when you go to vote here soon coming up, make sure you come to the meetings and see who is going to vote against the rents keeping low. I stand here, I stand before you today not just as a real estate professional and a housing provider, but someone who generally cares. I spent decades investing in housing, quality housing, because I believe everyone deserves a safe and well-meaning place they call home. Recently, some individuals have taken to social media and public forums, grunting around the word "floor yours", without any real understanding of the work, the effort, the responsibility that goes into providing housing. Let me be clear, words have weight. Reckless accusations, especially when made without a full picture, don't just damage reputations, they discourage investment, detour good landlords from continuing to improve housing, and ultimately hurt the very people we are all trained to serve, our tenants. For those who choose to sit behind a keyboard and make faceless claims, I invite you to step into our world for a day, walk through the properties we manage, meet hard-working families who benefits from them, and understand real challenges of balance, affordability, maintenance, and even changing regulations. Are there bad actors in this industry? Of course, but lumping every housing provider into the same category without facts is not only unfair, it's irresponsible. Before throwing out labels, I encourage people to seek the truth, ask questions, and get involved and conduct discussions instead of reporting to online finger-pointing. Our city thrives when we work together, not when we tear each other down. If we truly want to improve better housing, let's talk solutions, not insults. I welcome conversations, I welcome transparency, and I welcome accountability. But what I won't stand for is misinformation, reckless public shaming. Thank you.
Just wanted to say that I'd like to get my community involvement. I remember only making a handful of us, but we know how to bring out the crowd. I'm thinking about a couple of things I wanted to work on about the rental situation I said, and I remember being an undergraduate student at the University of Akron, and I called my friends and told them we needed to do something on our refund checks. I said, "We're gonna stop Olive Garden and Alliance, we're gonna bring it to the city." And a couple of our elders told us we couldn't do so because it's kind of red, blocking out the things that we could bring to the city. We didn't think anything of it, but as businesses come and go, I noticed that some people that say they're low-income, they never get the income, and then some do. I also saw one of our council members accuse themselves from high ventures for $400,000 on loan for the Chick-fil-A that was taking place, which you're allowed to have a business, right? But my thing about this is, taking this from an economic standpoint to a rental standpoint, where I don't know necessarily that the motive is full of integrity. The reason why I say this is because I don't know what's gonna happen to these homes after people actually owe fines, will it be like Mel's, when you owe for your car and you can keep it? Will you then keep people's homes if they don't pay these fees, these fines? I think I have a lot of questions, and I'm glad that you have listened to the company and have dialed all about it, because also, I think that the people need to know exactly what some of the other folks have said. No one's gonna pay a $300 bill to get something fixed on a house like their home, and they can barely feed their children. So these are the things that I've thought about, and also, 30 days after the fee takes place, if you don't cover it, you'll have another fee that is assessed. This will just keep drawing and growing and growing. The last thing that I did say is that, I mean, at the end of the day, you don't like what takes place, it's kind of like what Mrs. Kiko said, it just loops your turn. So this is just best listened to the people, the young people, the older people, all of us, because at the end of the day, if you're an older elder, you're talking in contact with the lot, you're worried about medical expenses and living expenses, not anything that's broken on the outside of your home. Thank you.
Radio 8115 South Seneca. I'm really glad we didn't have anything new to present, because from what I've heard, there were still a lot of problems with this ordinance. And we keep hearing that it's a necessary ordinance to protect renters and to control the rent, but it doesn't really do that. There are still homes and apartments that are the most vulnerable residents will still be living in, that won't be inspected or repaired because they're owned by agencies that won't fall under the umbrella of this ordinance. So, rather than criticize, I'd like to offer you an alternative. I suggest that rather than hiring a bunch of inspectors and having to train them and buy new vehicles and have all this expense, I suggest we create a tenant advocate role at the health department. This could be as little as a 30-hour-a-week position, maybe not at first, we'll have to see how it goes. That person can be a conduit between tenants and landlords. That person can help tenants walk through the current existing process, making sure that notices are delivered correctly and repairs have been coordinated. The advocate can walk the tenants through the process, but also to help determine if their complaint is legitimate. Does it justify kicking it out to an inspector and maybe a rental escrow process? But that person can be a middleman that will give a voice to people. Education is what protects people, not the hammer of the government. This ordinance proposed is a one-size-fits-all hammer designed to create revenue and hold selector for people to a standard that simply doesn't apply to Tedford. It creates division, conflict, destroys trust, creates another wall between government and the people. Choosing instead to create an advocate role creates a voice, it creates a relationship that will lead to trust, that can lead to true change, change that doesn't feel like we fought a war to get it, change that might remind people that we are better than we have recently shown. I will lie if we can, I can share with you, if anyone is interested in actually pursuing this. I've spent my life designing systems, I will happily volunteer my time to write a job description, create procedures, and create a recovery system. Thank you.
My name is Julie Jarkides. I live at 1469 Turwood Boulevard in Orleans. I moved back in my calendar to see when it was that I spoke to this body before about the landlord term issues, and it was April of last year. And my personal experience as an attorney during that time and prior to that, the reason why I spoke, has not changed. I still get calls on a daily basis from tenants who can't understand why basic code enforcement can't happen on the properties that they live in in this city. They can't reach their landlords, or they can't reach the city, or if they reach the city, the city can't reach the landlord, or if they do reach the landlord, the landlord says, "Hey, no problem, we'll take care of it," and the tenant has no recourse. What we have is not working, and I know you've both been working on it and clearly been hearing about it, right? But this ordinance doesn't fix that, and I did not come here to be critical of anybody, but I want to encourage you again to look at the examples of our neighbors, because there are at least two communities who think 30 miles of here has passed legislation to address this issue, to help tenants and to treat landlords equally. We do not need to be created to live here. We have examples that are not only practical, that accomplish the tasks that this council has set out to address, but that have been challenged and upheld. This ordinance, as I read it as an attorney, exposes the city to tremendous liability, will be challenged, and will probably lose. It also does not help tenants, it creates an operational nightmare inward. So I, again, as I did in April of last year, am here to offer whatever help I can be given for a member of this body, as an attorney, and as somebody who's genuinely concerned. Attorney, sorry, give me a promotion there. Councilwoman Mastriani has taken my calls and has engaged in thoughtful conversation with me about the concerns that I have highlighted from the ordinance, and I very much appreciate his time, because I know he's working hard, and I know he's heard from a lot of people, but I want all of the rest of you to know that I still, along with so many people in this community, believe that this is really an urgent issue, and if this ordinance is still not fixed, what is fixed and when? Because the calls aren't gonna stop, the tenants aren't gonna stop having issues, so please address this. Let us help you, and thank you for your time.
My name is Wes Schultz. I live at 6467 Hitting. I'm a housing provider. I hold a large number of properties in this town. We have a system in place that would work, the fact is, the city is just not utilizing, and you want to, you want to charge only housing providers to fix the city-wide problem. Why should I have the financial responsibility of hiring more city employees to enforce a code that is already in place? This is discrimination in the highest order. Thank you.
Because I got a smother on my ass, I broke down my speech, I dropped my coffee. No, the rest of the day.
Hello, from Venmo, 1005, people wearing pink or white. First, I want to start by saying, "Thank you, everybody, for coming, because this is probably the largest town in the city I've ever had, and this is democracy. This is what makes us a better..." A moment, and point out to city council, this is the voice, these are the people speaking. Just want to say that. Second, I don't normally ever put out my family's entries, I don't normally ever put out the things that me and my family do. There are people in this room, in this avenue and in this room, that like to say they have nothing to gain from this. I am the only second-chance housing provider in City Alliance, I'm one of four second-chance housing providers in Stark County. I donate over $100,000 a year to this community and the city. We bought 27 Christmas trees, I feed families, I put up boarding shelters, I donate gifts to kids, I donate food in the summertime, I feed the fire department, police department, clothing shelters, I donate food. We literally spend, on average, $100,000 a year donations to this city. So when I get told that I'm a slumlord, or that I treat people wrong, I take offense to that. I would like to also point out that APO and myself could have reached out to Jessica numerous amount of times, she refuses to speak to us, even first in front of APO, or see if there's a way to resolve this. I'm calling to anybody who would like to sit down, who would love to sit down. APO is not, nor any landlord here, against clean, safe, and affordable housing. What we're against is a fee that can constantly go up. Perfect example, Canton's fee, it started out at $35, three years later, it's $145, plus $250 inspection, and a minimum fee of $100 when they do the inspection. And they never come out. Once you pay them, they leave you alone. So our question is, Mike Trager told us that he needs about $640,000 to make this system work, if this would be able to work, that would be said, because we were there. So I'd like to just point out the aspect of, we're not against it, we're against the fee. I also like to invite you that every single one of my offices, I will give you total access anytime you want. Awesome, awesome, Red, loving this game.
All right, now moving on to third reading. Oh, before that, I forgot to get a motion to excuse Mrs. Cherry, she's having another problem. Moved by Dr. Lones, second by Mr. Cherry. Cindy, Dave, follow the roll.
Bagheera, Edwards, Kiko, King, Lones, Mastriani.
All right, moving on.
Ordinance 125, introduced by council as a whole. An ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to accept Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council 2025 Energized Community Grant Funds.
Council's pleasure.
I move to accept.
Move your third ordinance, 125, second by Dr. Lones, move your discussion.
Bagheera, Edwards, Kiko, King, Lones, Mastriani.
Ordinance 225, introduced by council as a whole. An ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Public Safety and Service to hire a consultant to assist in preparing applications and to apply for grants from the Ohio Department of Development Round Field Mediation Program with Stark County Land Utilization Corporation in declaring an emergency.
Council's pleasure.
I'll move for the adoption of ordinance 225.
Then move to adopt, second by Edwards, for a discussion question, please.
Bagheera, Edwards, Kiko, King, Lones, Mastriani.
Ordinance 525, introduced by Mastriani. An ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Public Safety and Service to enter into supplemental development agreement with ST Alliance LLC in declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mastriani. I'll move for the adoption of ordinance 25.
Then move to adopt, second by Mr. Peral, for a question or discussion. All the roll, please.
Bagheera, Edwards, Kiko, King, Lones, Mastriani.
Ordinance 325, introduced by Mastriani. An ordinance accepting and approving the replat of lots 2771 and 2772 located at 154 South Street in the City of Alliance, the county of Stark, the state of Ohio.
Mr. Mastriani. Was this recommended at planning commission or last meeting? Okay, then I'll refer ordinance 325 to planning commission.
Motion to adjourn, second. Mr. Lones, Dr. Lones, move your questions up ahead for adjournment. All right, moving on.
Ordinance 425, introduced by Mastriani. An ordinance accepting and approving the replat of lots 5750, 5751, 5752, 5753, 12313 to 12314, 12590, and block 825 located at 350 East State Street in the City of Alliance, the county of Stark, the state of Ohio.
I would like to refer ordinance 425 to planning commission.
I thought it was possible.
That was a little...
No action.
All right, moving on.
Ordinance 725, introduced by Edwards. An ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Public Safety and Service to advertise for bids or to utilize cooperative purchasing programs in entering into contracts at the lowest and best price for purchase and installation of a new primary screening equipment for the wastewater treatment plant at a total cost not to exceed $550,000 in any case in declaring an emergency.
Move for the suspension of the law for crying. Order 725.
Move to suspend the rule, second by Mr. Mastriani.
Bagheera, Edwards, Kiko, King, Lones, Mastriani.
Move forward. Rule...
I move for the adoption of ordinance 725.
Second. And Mr. Kiko, ready for discussion, question. All the roll.
Bagheera, Edwards, Kiko, King, Lones, Mastriani. Resolution...
Resolution 825 introduced by council as a whole, a resolution of the council of the City of Alliance expressing opposition to Senate Bill 56.
Council's pleasure. Will Kiko move?
A second.
Move the second to approve.
Bagheera, Edwards, Kiko, King, Lones, Mastriani. Ordinance 925 introduced by Edwards, in ordinance amending the sanitary sewer services contained in ordinance 3404, as amended by ordinances 17204, 10508, 10711, 7612, 521, 322, 823, and 1324, in declaring an emergency.
No actions.
No action. Moving on, whole business.
Ordinance 9624 introduced by Edwards, in ordinance appropriating funds and authorizing and directing the city auditor to pay Ohio EPA license add-on to Michael Drager, but at a cost not to exceed nineteen thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars and sixty cents.
I move for the adoption of ordinance 96-24.
Move to adopt, seconded by Dr. Lones, for your discussion and question.
Bagheera, Edwards, Kiko, King, Lones, Mastriani.
We're gonna move to the order. Moving on to the beginning of the order.
I think I should speak to both folks on this ordinance, I could not support it as written, I cannot support it as written either. And just an observation, I've lived over fifty years, but I'm from a small town down in Yurksville, down in Southern Tuskawas County, when I do down and visit my relatives, there's a Yurksville Edison, they're almost like one path, you go from one town to the other. And I didn't know that Edison had approved a registration for their rentals, and Yurksville had not. Well, Yurksville now has over eighty percent rental properties in the town. And I can't see the inside, but I sure know when I drive around, the difference between those two towns that are almost, they've been there forever, they're the same town again, you can go from one to the other, you can even see it without looking on the inside. So, that's one observation I have on that. But I want to also thank Councilwoman Mastriani and our committee, Jim and I. It's not the council's fault that this has been going on this long, we just have to look at things. And I thank him for the time that he's put in, and all the time and hours that he's done to take away from his business and his young family. He's not in it for him, believe me, and neither are we. I mean, we want to make the city the best that it can be, possibly make this move faster. Julie's been up here offering her services, if there's somebody that is out there that's an expert on this stuff, can make this move faster, you know, I say, you know, let's get them in here, go for outside towns, Jim, if Katie will sign off on that, makes this move on down, and with somebody to look at it, that really knows more about this, because like she said, they're all over the place. But that's what I would recommend, and I do thank everybody for being here. I think it's great, you're right, this is democracy. But we, like I said, none of us are here for ourselves, we're just here, they're trying to be a puzzle between the people of this town and the government, the administration. The administration also, I agree about these economic jobs too, I think they're doing as much as they can, but believe me, the competition's on, you know, to get these places in here. And anything that comes in is better than nothing that comes in, but I know that they're constantly working on this. Council doesn't do that, administration does that, but we do everything we can do to help put in place things that make our community more attractive for businesses to come in. Thanks for coming.
I would also like to thank Phillip, because I know this has not been easy, this has not been easy on anybody. And I commend his comments, Chip's comments too, because we are trying to make this city better. I moved here because I chose this city. My children live in Marlington area, I want to be closer to my grandkids. I serve, I've been a public servant for a long time, and this is democracy, we are a republic, and the people vote us to be the representatives for you. And Phillip, I know that this is hard, I was very glad to hear that we're gonna meet again. Randy, I love your idea, I think an advocacy team could be on both sides, could be, you know, very successful, and I also do think we have to have a cost of emphasis. We've talked about that, we have to do that before we move anywhere. But thank you, Phillip, I really appreciate all the time as well.
I just would like to echo a lot of the sentiments that Councilman Edwards presented tonight, and also thank him, Mr. Mastriani, for the work that he's done. I've heard several occasions in regards to the affordability of repairs that may come this way, I was just wondering if any of the tenants have access to Stark County Community Action Agency, the heat program, the H-WAP program, and then also, I believe CBP heat money is also available for up to zero to thirty percentile for income. And then I know that the Habitat's Critical Home Repair Program, Revolve and Loan Program, is geared towards the thirty to sixty percentile income earners here in town to help with affordability of any repairs. Also, I believe H-WAP also allows a tenant to request repairs when they don't even own the home, so they have to get permission from the tenant, not from their landlord, but I don't see why they would object. So, I'm gonna go ahead and try to organize a speaker, the next council meeting, to address those three funding repair programs that we have available. Just wanted to offer that. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments, Jim, and Jen, Jim. But it truly is a team effort, everybody's been involved, and like I said, I know the community wants to see some resolution to this, but it is a very important issue, it's a factor that affects everybody in our community, and we need to make sure we do this the right way. Rushing the process is not the way to do it, in my opinion. So, we are taking our time, it's deliberate, and I think, I hope, my goal is at the end of this, that we will have the support of everybody in the community, that they can see the positive effects that this will have on the community, on everybody renting, on everybody that owns a home or a business alliance. Housing is a major factor in establishing and keeping a vibrant community. So, I appreciate everybody's help and effort and time on both sides of it, APO and tenant apps groups. It's been a long conversation we've had, but I think it's been helpful, so with that, thank you.
Next, Piki, please. We have the authority to go to the playhouse, the overlord at the courthouse. On the demand, we have to then pre-announce that it's a different place. Was it the council's, you're gonna get that for the, for the, for the, for the, for the back to our regular meeting place, and if we need to, we'll, we'll go to population, go to the playhouse.
If you want to come here again, you'll have to make a motion.
Motion, please.
Otherwise, our community authority is going to be overloaded, you would hire housework elsewhere else, so if you want to hear the motion, otherwise.
Do we know if we're having practice with this?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate you. What's your, you got other comments? Okay, then I, we go back, all right? If we find out that there is a, that there is a, okay, yeah, all right, so our next meeting will be back at the courthouse, the overlord would like to ask, we're going to the courthouse. All right, the bad motion for Jerry, that's the order. Rooted by Mr. Pat, seconded by Bagheera.
Edwards, Kiko, King, Lones, Mastriani.